Workshop meeting of the board trustees being called to order on September 11th, 2017. The time is 6:02. If you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will begin with item number two, board workshop, a presentation for the employee benefits insurance consultant.
Good evening, Ms. Nahara, Superintendent, Dr. Spinelstein, board members. Sorry, I'm a little too tall. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer for the school district. Tonight, we do have two vendors that will be presenting theirs, what they would provide us as services for the consulting of our health benefits package. And also, if in the future the district decides to open up a health clinic, both vendors will also be able to provide us consulting services for the health clinic. Now, one thing that I do want to stress upon is, we did form a committee, finance did form a committee, to review the consulting services mainly for the health benefits. If you all recall, over three years ago, the board did approve for USI to be our benefits consultant. So we're really looking into replacing USI as a benefits consultant. However, since we did have a board workshop and we continue looking at the possibility of opening up a health clinic in the future, we did ask the vendors to also include that, to have it available if the district decides to move forward. However, we're not asking the approval from the board next week on anything to do with health clinic. At this point, it's only for the consulting services. And at this point, since we don't have the clinic, it's only for the health benefit site. Before we call them in, I do want to thank the committee. We did have a committee that reviewed a total of five vendors, I believe. So we do have a teacher, Walter Clark Cindy Wilkie, and she is here. One of our principals, Jessica Macias. Then we have Rebecca Madrid, or from our nursing department. In HR, we do have Will Naro and Sylvia Hernandez. And we did have Mr. Carmona. Unfortunately, his mother did pass away on Sunday, so he's not in today or probably this week. So I do have Mr. Redlinger that is sitting in on his behalf. And then, of course, in finance, Susan Olson, Mr. Ressa, Maria Morales, and Mr. Sam Garcia as well. So I do want to thank them because they did spend hours and hours reviewing these presentations as well. Without further ado, if you'll allow me, we will...
So they do have, you are allowed to ask questions about just for information purposes on the clinic, right?
Yes, that is correct. So you are allowed, now we gave them 20 minutes. Sylvia, Sylvia, if you can hold on, Sylvia, if you can hold on. We did allow them 20 minutes to present to you, and then we designated 10 minutes for questions and answers. Now, they did present what they provide for the health clinic, services that they provide for the health clinic. So by all means, if you have questions regarding the services for the health clinic, you're welcome to ask them questions as well. Any questions before I bring them in?
Yes, Mr. Nahara, Mr. Campoya, before we get started, just so I get around the same sheet of paper, could you give us a quick summary on typically what these consultant services would provide for us on our health benefits? Obviously, we've done this before, this is not the first time. But as we're listening to these folks, could you summarize what services we're hoping to acquire from them?
Yes. So one of the big ones that occurred last school year was the redesign of the health benefits plan. As you all recall, Mr. Carmona presented to you all the redesigning of the benefits plan. Well, that was phase one, so we still need to look at phase two to try to save the district money. So the consultant helps us with that. Affordable Care Act, now with President Trump, changes are coming our way as well, so the consultant helps us with that. If we have any other research that needs to be done when we do presentations to the board, to leadership or what have you, the consultant is supposed to help us with research as well. Now, for the health clinic, if we were to go that route, they're going to help us with opening it up, if not, help us get a third-party administrator to oversee the clinic and so forth. So those are, just in a nutshell, some of the services that the consultant provides.
And this contract typically for how long?
I'm not sure on the contract, Mr. Garcia.
We have, it's three-year agreement.
Okay. With options or we just do it every three years?
Yeah, because what's very common, what's very common in the insurance industry is that we guarantee a three-year, the rates that stay instead of an increase on an annual basis, and we have some options to extend. But it's a three-year, no offer.
Any other questions before we bring them in? So we're going to bring in, I believe Hub is the first one, and then Gallagher will follow. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Randy McGraw with Hub International, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Thanks for inviting us, Matt. I also have with me in the back of the room Armando Arieta. He is also one of our licensed consultants and a new member for our consulting team. So of course, we understand the format to provide you with some general information, and we're happy to answer any questions either during the presentation or afterwards as you see fit. Thought I'd start off by giving you, I'm not sure how much additional information you've been provided prior to tonight's meeting, but just a high-level recap. Hub International is a privately-held company headquartered in Chicago, Illinois. We have operations in Canada, the United States, and Puerto Rico. Our division, a lot of people will ask us, what does Hub stand for? And really, it just describes the philosophy of the organization in terms of how we're structured. We do have corporate offices. We're in the top 10 largest global risk management firms in the world for property casualty, general liability, anything that involves insurance or benefit plans, et cetera. But the name Hub, it really describes the relationship with the outlying offices. So, for example, our office is part of Hub International Texas, which is a Texas corporation. And formerly, we were known as JDW Insurance based here in El Paso. And JDW had a 100-year legacy of providing insurance services to El Pasoans. And in 2012, some of the shareholders, well, all the shareholders, myself included, made a decision to go ahead and sell our company to Hub because we thought it brought a lot of synergy to the organization. And Hub had told us that they were not buying us just because we had a lot of insurance customers or revenues or things like that, but they really were seeking to purchase us for our talent. And I was skeptical at first, but it's proven out in the development of the company. Martin Young, who was previously our president here in El Paso, is now president of Hub International Texas. John Long, who was our chief financial officer based here in El Paso, ever since the inception of the current generation of JDW Insurance, is now the chief operating officer for Hub International Texas. A lot of their work processes and philosophies that we had here in El Paso are being replicated across the state of Texas. So they really did mean what they said, where they were looking for talent, not just money when they made the acquisition. But at the same time, it gives us the freedom to operate how we operate, which is now the way that Hub International or Hub Texas operates. So that's just a little bit of the background there. So it's an international company with a national presence, with a local flavor. You can see, our consulting team here is kind of a niche in Texas. We're probably the largest consulting team for Hub in the Texas region. Well, I know we are the largest. And we currently have the engagements that you can see there in El Paso, San Antonio, Corpus Christi, Laredo, Tempe, Odessa, Waco, et cetera. This is the four team members that make up our consulting team. There's myself. Three of us are actually licensed consultants. Debbie Lopez is our director of data analytics. And as such, she doesn't have a need to be as knowledgeable about the mechanics of how you run health plans, et cetera, but she is a genius and a whiz when it comes to manipulating data and using data and analyzing data. I would think of her as the engine behind our organization because without data, it's difficult to assess and manage things. Alisa Elgin is a senior benefits consultant, and she specializes in compliance primarily. And Armando Arieta, who just joined us, is learning the ropes, but he's been very instrumental in helping us already in compliance and employee communications and attending board meetings, making presentations, et cetera, for all of our various clients. I've been in this business for 32 years. And you had some questions about what makes us ideally suited for your engagement. So when I began my career, I knew nothing about insurance, but I figured out rather quickly that some of my best customers were school districts, cities, and counties. And that's pretty much how my career has developed too, and those are the areas that we focus on in looking for our customers. So I've worked with school districts all across the state of Texas. I began in the Beaumont, Port Arthur, southeast Texas area. I ran a regional marketing operation for a major insurance carrier in the Panhandle area that covered everywhere from Amarillo to Minnella, Odessa, and El Paso. And in 1991, I began working here in El Paso. 1994, I moved here to El Paso and have no desire to go anywhere else. So this is a great place to live. There's no hurricanes, tornadoes, floods. Unlike Beaumont, which is underwater right now. So a couple of things that we did along the way is too, is we recognized that even though we have corporate resources we can rely upon to call, you know, if we have technical questions. For example, I'm answering some questions for another school district in your waiting room right now. And our compliance team is a great backstop for us, but we also understand that we live in an age where people have an expectation of instant gratification. So Alisa specializes in compliance. That way, we don't have to go to our compliance team all the time, but we use them as a resource when necessary. In 2009 is when we brought Debbie Lopez on board, and that's been fantastic. And I'll show you some snapshots of work that we do. But that's fantastic. Hub can provide any difficulty. But again, even in our own organization, when we have a customer with a need, there may be 20, 30 other clients around the country that are waiting in line for someone to respond. When we have all that housed right here in El Paso, then we can give you immediate attention. One of the key things too that we're very good at is forecasting. And that's difficult when you have self-insured plans. You're trying to assess the risks, determine what changes might change different behavior in the future, whether they're contractual changes with healthcare providers, whether they're benefit plan design changes that might change the way people seek healthcare, whether they're educational changes, where you're trying to teach people to be better consumers of healthcare. All of those things, plus the unpredictable nature of risk, can complicate the forecast process of looking forward. But that's so important for a school district or any public entity to be able during your budget time to be able to have reasonable expectations of what you might see in the next year. And we're very good at our forecasting. We also have quite a few clients with onsite, or I call it near-site clients as well. So we have seven, eight public entity clients that have clinics, whether they're either onsite or near-site. And near-site just might mean, for example, at El Paso ISD, we have an onsite clinic there in the administrative offices on Boeing, but then we also have several other clinics scattered around the city so that not all employees have to come to the Boeing address to be able to seek services from the clinic. And we have contracted providers where they can go and get the same services in three different points around the city, which makes it geographically easy for people to access the clinic. Same thing over at the Sleded School District. We have the clinic there in the headquarters on Sims Road, but then we also have contracts in the northeast and the far east too, where some other providers have extra capacity. And if employees don't want to come all the way down to the administrative offices, then they can seek services through those clinics as well. So we have experience in helping our clients manage clinics and implement them and monitor them and see how they're going to work. These are a few questions that your committee had asked us to cover when we met with them on Friday. So one of them was, you know, I guess elaborate on your experience as it relates to providing services to school districts. So like I said, our niche target market for our team is public entities in Texas, cities, counties. Housing Authority is kind of a close one, they're not a taxing entity, but they're one of our clients here as well. And then with those, seven of them are school districts. There's several that are located here that you'll see on our reference list. We have five of them on the reference list. We have two other school district clients in the San Antonio market as well that we provide services for. And as again, you can see that we have eight different clinics, all different styles. Some of them are provided by hospital providers. Some of them are provided by turnkey systems. Some of them are closely managed by the employer. Some of them we've outsourced to other clinic services as well. So in each market, with each need and each client, we look to see what best fits their need, and we help them come up with a viable solution as far as that goes. And then, again, this is where we have some screenshots too, of some of the advancements that we've made in assessing things when we're doing consulting work for our clients. So as you're probably aware, if you've sat through several discussions on budget and adopting rates or benefits, you know that the claims cost of your health plan is the biggest portion of that expense. And when it comes time to assess who can do what in the marketplace, of course, every salesperson comes in and says, I've got the best product. I've got the biggest provider network. I've got the best negotiated rates. And they can put that down on a sheet of paper, and they can make some representations to back it up with some guarantees. What we do, and this is a real current example, is we take actual claims data and we bounce it off of their system. So in this example here, you can see there's 27,000 lines of claims data that's been de-identified to protect individuals, but this is real claims data. And we give that out to the carriers once they've signed the appropriate disclosures and permitted use agreements so that they can test it against their claim system. Once we run it through their claim system, now we know whether they can really deliver on what their average discount might be. So a lot of them will come in and say, I can deliver a 67% discount or a 47 or a 50 or whatever. This is the actual results of the claim testing scenario right here. Both your in and out-of-network claims. Now that we have all your claims data in a database, we can actually look and seek it out on an individual or a data service basis or a type of service too. But we typically group it into several categories, inpatient, outpatient, professional, other expenses. We can drill down to urgent care centers, freestanding emergency rooms, physician offices, types of procedure, whatever. It's a database that we can sort it and we can look at. Because this gives you a static view of what happened in the past. But it also, when you have 27,000 sample sizes in your dataset, it allows you to get pretty close and verify whether they spoke the truth when they said, I can deliver 65, 62, 63, or whatever. Also, with all that information in the database as well, when it's time to sit down with your committee or with the board, a popular question after we've gone through all the detailed analytics and seeing who's best on price, et cetera, in the end, it is a benefit plan that people are going to use, and they want to know, is my doctor in the network? Is my hospital in the network? So we can lay down all the providers on a list, and we can sort them by name, zip code, type of location, rank them by who goes there the most, and then also provide you a searchable index here that shows this provider is in the network. So in other words, if I'm using this one right here, and I'm going to switch to this one, I can go down this list and I can sort it just to the ones that are yeses or nos. And it allows your team to have immediate input on being able to assess, is this going to be able to meet my needs? And we put all this at your fingertips so that it's easy for you to use. This is a list that the committee had asked for, and of course, we've included that in our proposed response. These are four clients here that we have in the El Paso area. And then Laredo School District, that's one that was fully insured, and they got into trouble, and we went out there in 2013, turned the plan into a self-insured plan, helped them manage it. The district has only increased its contribution two times in five years, and only one time on payroll deductions for employees. It made no benefit changes except one required change in their high-deductible health plan by the IRS in that five-year, or coming up on a five-year time period. So we're able to go from a fully insured environment to a self-insured environment, make good, accurate projections for the future, and then provide stability that they hadn't had in the past in terms of managing their healthcare plan. So there was a prior solicitation, I'm sure you're aware of, to provide clinic consulting. And it's really intriguing to look at what you've laid out in terms of the space for your clinic and your concepts and things going forward. And then you did the separate solicitation for consulting services, and then you asked, can we do both? And there's our answer, yes, we'd be happy to do both. You also had some questions, quite a few, I think several of these coming up relate to, you know, what can you do to help us get the clinic up and running and help manage it, et cetera? And so there was some pretty specific questions there too in terms of how would you help us implement and value and manage the workflows and developments and inventory supply IT, et cetera? This is probably a quicker explanation than we gave on Friday, but this is the process that we tackle every new project with. And it's just basically common sense. In the first step, we sit down with you, identify what are your resources, what are your constraints, what are you trying to accomplish? Then we collaborate with you, and we share the knowledge that we've gathered by working with our other various clients and the different things that they've come up with. And then this stage here would be where we lay out the plans to decide, because for example, I know you started off, you were saying you'd like to hire and have full control of your entire clinic, from everything, from your medical director, all of your practitioners, everything, total control of the district. The other end of that process could include outsourcing it to a firm that includes turnkey services. So regardless of whichever way that you end up going, that would, at this stage, is when we would lay down the guidelines for how we're going to get it done, when it's going to be done by, how we're going to control it, et cetera. Once we have it implemented, then at this stage, we start to gather more information. And I think this is one of the great strengths that our company provides to people too. A lot of times, I'll say, this is a common question people ask, and this would be the one that I think is most important to our customers, is we not only answer the questions that you ask, but we identify the ones that you should have asked that you didn't. And then we help transfer all of our knowledge to you because then we make a better collaborative team as we go forward. So once we've done that, then we start to put up the measurement process where we're looking to control and manage all the outcomes, and then reevaluate, are the policies and procedures and guidelines and systems we put in place, are they working? If not, constant improvement? And then like any other quality initiative, it just continues the cycle over and over and over. So in your case, there was one, this is a little bit more in words, what the wheel was just saying is, once we've identified your key personnel, whether you're hiring them directly yourselves or we're outsourcing it through another firm, once we've got the team together, then we work to put together the system that will monitor and measure everything, from inventory control, if you had revenue management, all of those different things that go into the successful operation of the clinic. And then periodically come back and reassess it and make sure that it's continuing to grow. So a lot of the clinics have started off with an idea, but I think without hesitation, other than that little half-second, nobody is still doing the same thing they started off with. So you'll probably come to some ideas and say, like, certain days are busier than other days, or certain times are not as busy as other times, or maybe I wanted this to be a walk-in clinic as opposed to scheduling appointment. As you start to see your traffic patterns develop and see what types of things happen, then that may lead you to change the hours that you operate, the staffing that you have, whether it's walk-in or by appointment or some combination of both, because you just have to adapt to meet the needs of your population. I can tell you one thing for sure, in school districts, it's a real popular time to go by the clinic, right after school lets out and before it's over. And so a lot of times, if we haven't thought ahead how we're going to schedule things, you get some discontent from employees because if they're just walking in and they get there late, they're at the end of the queue, and of course, your clinic providers are ready to go home at the end of the day. So there's just some simple things that have to be addressed, not just the delivery of healthcare, but making sure that it's accessible and making sure that it meets the goals that you had, which are to provide the clinic services, improve the overall health of your population, improve productivity, and then, you know, provide an avenue for people to have access to quality care where they can have a better outcome in their life and life expectancy. So how will we promote that? And this kind of ties into some other questions that you had too in terms of communications. So one thing that's important is, everybody, especially in this generation that we have right now, in terms of some of your older employees and some of your younger employees, people have different ways that they prefer to receive their communication. So for example, Armando, he likes everything to come across on his phone. I prefer email, and I've got a guy in my office that takes all of his emails, prints them out, puts them in a three-ring binder. So you can't just have one size fits all when it comes to the communication and the engagement process. You need to be able to understand your audience. You need to have multiple channels of communication. And then you need to deploy all of those at the same time, and you need to measure it too to make sure that those things are effective. And so the other thing too is how do you get people to change their behavior? If you could figure that out as it relates to the consumption of healthcare, you could solve the crisis of the ever-rising cost of healthcare in the world. But one thing's for sure, whoops, it's when you incentivize people, incentivize like give them money or some type of reward, then they'll respond. And just think about it right now, on your keychain, how many little reward card things you might have, or now you may have them on your phone, or now even when you go to Howdy's or wherever you go, whether it's the grocery store, everybody has some type of rewards program. So creating a program that rewards people is going to get them engaged and get them involved. And then that dovetails with your communications to get back to them. And then I put down here, think total rewards, and I'll share with you some ideas that Hub uses on its own employees. We've got 10,000 employees scattered all across the country. There's no one-size-fits-all. This is our current year's benefit guide. So you can see, we're not in the form of total rewards or total compensation, that there's a category over here that says vacation time. But at some extreme, you might take your entire total compensation package, and it's a menu where people can say, I want more health insurance than I do retirement benefits or than I do vacation time or sick leave. And you give them their budget, and they go shopping for whatever it is that best meets their particular needs. And that could vary for whether you're a new employee or, you know, fresh out of college, 20-something years old versus someone who's been here like myself and we're in our 50s or 60s and approaching retirement. We have different needs. But as it relates to health insurance, we have quite a few different plans. We incentivize the health-saving account with contributions. We also incentivize our wellness program. We don't have onsite clinics, but you can see, we tier our payroll deductions based on income. So you can have employees that earn under $50,000 if they do the wellness discount, which means they have to go to a clinic somewhere, get their blood drawn, have the physical, fill out all their health risk assessments, et cetera. This is a bi-weekly payroll. If you have a family, you can save $100 per pay period, $2,600 by doing the wellness initiative. So we've got wellness incentives. We have our plans tiered to different income strategies. If you pick certain plans, they'll make contributions to your account.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that was your time limit.
Oh, okay.
We did have time for some questions and answers.
Okay. The rest of it's pretty self-explanatory.
You want to go first, sir? Mr. McGraw, in reference to the, I guess to take this in turn, consulting on our benefits packet, are you familiar with our current package?
Yes, sir.
And so are you also familiar with what this board and this district has tried to do in order to maintain a good benefit package for our employees? Also, make sure that they should, they need, they are able to get to referral hospitals, and that we're able to provide them good healthcare at a low cost? And do you feel your company would be able to work with that? And the reason I'm asking is oftentimes, somebody looks at something and they want our plan to fit what you're comfortable with. How good are you in fitting to where we're comfortable with and still making it work?
Very good. So yes, and you're right, so like if you notice on our, and it happens no matter where you are, but four of the other sizable school districts here in this area are our clients. And pretty much every time it's budget time or looking at making plan design changes or payroll deduction changes, whether it's a committee or a board workshop, everybody wants to know what their peers are doing here in the area. And so historically, for a longest time, Socorro has greatly subsidized the health program to keep the payroll deduction amounts low and competitive. And we hear that a lot from the other districts. They'll all say, well, at Socorro, our rates run like this. A lot of the other districts are passing on costs to their employees through higher payroll deductions. So at Canuteo, for example, this last year, and I know you've got a lot of employees here that used to work at Canuteo, they kind of joined your ranks, and they decided that rather than pass cost on proportionally... rather than pass costs on proportionally, the district absorbed more costs so that they could keep their deductions down low. So, yeah, we're familiar with how we set the rates, we're familiar with the plan designs, we're familiar with the open access and the importance of having access to good quality providers at reasonable rates.
Okay, so, moving on then, a little bit, we can come back, I know everybody has questions, and so, in discussing the clinic format, are you familiar with Mesquite's Employee Clinic, Mesquite ISD?
It's been a while. They had a joint clinic, I believe, with the city.
That's correct.
And they also operated a pharmacy as well. And, but I don't know that they're still operating the pharmacy. It's been a while since I talked to them.
Mr. Campoya and a couple of staff and I were just there.
Oh, okay.
So, one of the things, you mentioned a couple of the local districts, and at least in concept, if we were to open a clinic, the vision was something potentially with a pharmacy, but also something closer to a summit, not an emergency room, a summit, urgent care, rather than like what Isletta uses in their headquarters building, which is, you know, staffed by a nurse practitioner, basically very little treatment done, very little medication, come on in, you have a cold, let me give a prescription, you know, good luck. And it seemed like some of these other clinics were able to provide their employees better services, consequently getting them healthier, and also identifying illnesses much sooner by having some lab capacity, making sure people got their prescriptions right away, with the use of a clinic fee instead of a deductible or something like that. Are you familiar with that plan?
Yes.
Okay. And so, one of the things that I noticed in how you would help us, among those things in the setting up, are you familiar on how to set up the licensing for these clinics, including the medication? We understand there's three licenses for pharmacy, and what about, well, let me ask that and then I'll follow up that. Are you from, is your company able to assist us with advice on obtaining the licensing for a clinic and the pharmacy services?
We have the resources to help you do that. We haven't done it ourselves in our team, because most people are taking the easier way out, which is to just find a subcontractor and to do that. We do have pharmacy services being provided through the clinic vendor at the county health house. But we didn't put a clinic, or we didn't put a pharmacy in the county courthouse, or in their Delta Street location. So we're using University Medical Center as a clinic provider. And if there is a need for pharmaceuticals, then we're having those come from their pharmacy, and then they get delivered to the employees, but there's not a walk-in pharmacy that they come to. Because in addition to the licensing, you have all the other things you need to do to control all the profits there as well.
Well, it's a couple of locks, but beyond that, you know, in a safe, we're good to go. The issue here is, personally, not speaking necessarily for the other board member, the first concern here would be to provide good healthcare. And one of the things that we have found is, by being able to do this, people that traditionally would wait to go to the doctor because of their deductible and so forth, by doing this, it would get there sooner, we'd get them healthier, they could get back to work sooner, so that's good for us, but it's also good for them and their families. So the number one concern here is, are we going to be able to provide good healthcare for our employees? But the very next secondary concern here is cost. And so, if this cannot be a cost avoidance or a cost savings type of measure, then it may not work. And we have had an offer before by a practitioner that said, hey, we can do it as a clinic, you come over to me, and I'll charge you this much to do it. Well, the intent here is to avoid the profit-making aspect of the middleman there, or the profit-making ability elsewhere. If we can pay the practitioner directly, if we can buy the medications directly, the markup on medications, depending whether they're brand or generic, certainly varies, then that's a cost avoidance for this district in order for us to be able to maintain good healthcare. Do you feel that you would be able to do that type of thing?
Yes, sir.
And then...
And you touched a soft spot in my heart, too, because that's, everything I'm all about here is removing the profit load that other practitioners put in there, and especially on prescription drugs, especially generic drugs.
Well, and I'll tell you, with this clinic, everybody wants to open a clinic for you. I'll do it for you and I'll bill you. I'll do it for you for a contract, I'll do it for you and bill your insurance. We managed letting employees continue to go everywhere, because that's what we're doing now. If we're going to provide an option for them that'll benefit them, it has to also have a cost savings tied to that. Part of our setting up of this clinic, if we get to that point, we would need assistance with a search firm. The secret to success here is a dynamic physician, pharmacist, and a clinic manager. Does your firm allow, help with any search firm capacity?
Our company does.
So we could search?
Yes, sir. Well, first, I was going to say one thing for you, too, is that this part of the process, this database of data that we collect, because we take your actual claims data and we load it in here. So regardless, so for example, at the county of El Paso, we periodically, we have an arrangement with UMC where we pay them on a per visit basis, and then we have negotiated rates for other things that they charge. But then we periodically will take the cost of operating their clinic, and we'll compare it, because we can pull the same exact procedure codes and drug codes, everything that's being delivered has a code on it. We can compare that to what's happening inside your health plan, and then we can tell you which one is better. Because I could tell people, too, and I have, I can create the biggest clinic in El Paso by just turning off everybody's copay. You can go to any primary care doctor, and if they can deliver it cheaper than your healthcare, you know, your turnkey service, then why would I want to pay you for something that I already have access to? So that's where the power of the information comes in handy, to be able to benchmark that. And so, even in your own case, you would have to, we would, you know, that comparison would be, we'd take the cost of operating your clinic, all your salaries, supplies, overhead expense, internal expense, divide that into the number of services being delivered, compare that to how you're doing in the marketplace, and see if it makes a cost-effective decision from that point. The other things you're describing, too, the early detection, so a lot of people think putting in a clinic is going to lower your claims cost right away, and that doesn't usually happen. A lot of times, it goes up, because you do flush out situations. And we've uncovered bus drivers that are diabetic in denial, and you don't want a diabetic bus driver uncontrolled out here.
And a stroke walking around, yes.
So those, all of those things, sometimes that jumps the cost of claims up. But in the long run, and that's where you need to be thinking down the road ahead, is that early detection is going to lower the cost of claims in the future, and not only that, provide better quality of life for the employees.
Would you be able to use your database to compare, we get an employee that goes into our clinic to be assessed for a sinus infection? And we would be able to treat that employee, moves on, by entering the code, would you be able to compare that to what the cost would have been in the marketplace? Because that would be a way to also assess our cost savings.
Absolutely.
You would be able to do that routinely?
Yes.
I see. I think for now on there, I know we have limited time, so.
I do. Mr. McGraw, what is the source of your database? Because I know that professional level information usually isn't available at the claim level, it's available at the either state or metroplex level.
So, we take, and we insist for our largest clients, such as Socorro, that the carrier provide us access, either direct access into their claim system where we can extract the data, or they actually have to feed it to us. So we have some that feed it to us on a weekly basis, and then others where they warehouse the data and we can extract it as we need it. So it's your real actual claims data that comes out. And this has been, you know, shrunk down, de-identified just for purposes here, but it's your actual claims data. So, you know, we've had examples, too, you know, it could be anywhere from, you know, the classic one I gave to the committee, too, was, and we have, we have data feeds from Cigna, we have data feeds from Aetna, United Healthcare, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the four major healthcare providers that are insurance carriers. We have already on arrangements where we get the direct data. We also have direct data feeds coming from pharmacy benefit managers, such as Express Scripts. I may have lost track of it, I don't know if you still have Express Scripts or not, but any of those, we would pull that data and pull it down there from the parent. But for example, one of our clients has an operation in Gallup, New Mexico, and there's not a whole lot in Gallup, except Gallup, and a couple refineries and transport centers there, but they, we were noticing in their population, increased prevalence of people appearing in the emergency room with respiratory issues. And so then you scratch your head and say, why are you going to the emergency room so much? And that causes us to start to drill down and look in the data a little bit closer. Well, there are no specialists up in that area, so when people's children are having asthma, respiratory distress, their only avenue or place to go is to the emergency room. But then that helped us know that, number one, we don't really have a classical abuse problem, people just use in the emergency room as a doctor, we have a doctor shortage. We also then know we can start to change communications that go to them, and give them some direction, so if there's a way to keep them from access in the emergency room, and then by all means, we'd want to do that. But yes, we can check, you know, in the data, I could tell, you know, what drug you picked up on September 11th at 4:00, and what pharmacy it was, and the strength and the quantity and what you paid. Same thing on your health insurance claim.
Mr. McGraw, that is our time limit, thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you, we appreciate it, and I'll try to be shorter next time. We welcome the opportunity to work.
Thank you.
If Tony and Mike aren't going to let us ask our questions?
I mean, that's the time, we can extend if we need to. The intent is, we also didn't want to take three hours doing a presentation, but as far as question and answer, I mean, you're the board, if you need to get more information and make a decision, we can extend that part.
Yeah, I think so. I don't, I don't think the 20 minutes was long enough, but I'm going to bring him back in.
Well, as far as the presentation, now we can't extend, but question and answer, we can extend.
Right.
The presentation's still 20, but we can extend our questions.
Even question and answer, though, because, you know, if we give, I mean, in fairness, we have to give the next presenter the exact same amount of time that we do this one, and if, you know, they happen to manage their time better and give us more informed presentation, I mean, that, but, but I mean, I think we might be able to ask them to come back again.
At the end of this, it's something really important. If we need to bring him back in, this is something that we need to really cover well.
Yeah.
We need to bring him back, bring him back in, give him another 10, 15 minutes. Okay, so, we'll talk about it.
Ask him to wait. Ask him to wait.
You'll give us just a moment, please.
Because... This is a huge contract. He should wait. No, but I still have more questions. Okay. I mean, either way. To bring him back again?
Yeah. Or extend it to him.
Well, this is my thought, whatever time we end up needing to extend here in order to get our questions answered, we add that time to his time. They've already made the trip down here.
So he'll wait out there.
If he's willing to wait, if not...
Well, that'll...
Yeah, he'll wait there. Okay.
I'm sorry, please continue.
No problem. Well, hi, I'm Nick Long from Gallagher Benefits. I am the head of the Public Sector Division of Gallagher. A little bit about us, we are the largest benefit consultant in Texas, third largest in the world, about 20,000 employees, and we're spread out all over the state. One thing that makes us a little bit different from some of our competitors is, we don't outsource anything. So everything's under one roof, everything will be done in-house by Gallagher people and done in Texas. So our staff does nothing but public entity. So I'm the head of the public entity division, all my employees do nothing but Texas public entities. So that's a team of actuaries, underwriters, lawyers, doctors, nurses, account staff, all we do is Texas public entities. And the real advantage to that is that we're not out there talking to an oil company, or a car dealer, or anything like that. We spend every day focusing on Texas public entities, in particular, oftentimes, school districts. So we, of the 58 school districts in Texas that currently run their own health plan, so there's 1,200 school districts, somewhere around there, almost all of them are on TRS, except for 58, 30 of those are clients of ours. And our staff spends a lot of time working with these school districts and really understands what you guys need and what you guys are looking for, and some different ways to achieve those options. Also, we are the awarded benefit consultant of the TASB Benefit Co-op. So Texas Association of School Boards, TASB runs their own benefit co-op. Those 30 school districts are members of that co-op, we are the consultant for that co-op. The nice part about the benefits co-op, it allows you to do a variety of different things. It allows you to partner with the other districts to procure different products. If they've already gone out to bid and done an RFP, you can piggyback on that through the inter-local. And then also, in particular, there's chances to simply save significant amount of money. An example of that would be our PBM Coalition, our Pharmacy Benefit Manager Coalition, which is run through the co-op. Earlier this year, January of last year, Austin ISD came to us and said, okay, we want to go out to bid for pharmacy, and we want to start a co-op inside of the TASB co-op to go try to cut down on pharmacy costs. It's no secret pharmacy costs across the United States have been going up rapidly. They're now somewhere between 30, 35% of the total benefit spend, whereas just a few years ago, it was closer to 15%. Specialty drugs are killing everybody. So when Austin came to us and said that, we led this coalition together. Austin's about 15,000 employees, we took the rest of the benefit co-op out with them, and laid the potential of 120, 110,000 members out there, and because we all came together to purchase pharmaceuticals together, the cost was significantly reduced. Austin saved several million dollars in the first year, all the other districts combined saved as well. And so we're able to face the market as one unified force, and it just gives significant leverage, whereas you wouldn't really have it before with these large pharmaceutical companies. One thing that I was pretty pleased to see that your staff decided to do was to look at unifying the employee benefit consultant, the pharmacy consultant, and the clinic consultant. Really, those functions all work hand and glove. You can split it out and have different people, but it makes it very difficult. By looking for one consultant to do all of it inside, inside one program, it just simply makes a lot of sense, not only from a cost savings perspective of the fixed cost of the consulting, but because all these pieces have to work together. And so, when, to run a successful clinic program, no matter which model you take, it takes a lot of integration. So what you really want to do in a clinic model is you need the clinic data to flow up to the health plan, flow up to the pharmacy plan, but you also need that information to flow down as well, and flow down to the local people, the boots on the ground, to really make action happen. A good example of that would be, we have a mobile clinic in San Antonio ISD. And for a while, the data wasn't flowing correctly between, it was flowing up, but it wasn't flowing down. Once we finally got the data flowing down, we were able to take that data and make actionable difference with people on the ground. So, that's saying, okay, we had a high A1C test, so blood sugar out of control, and then those nurses can go see that person and say, hey, we see from your pharmaceutical data that you haven't filled your scripts, your insulin, in three months. What's the issue? This lady said, well, it's too expensive, it's too expensive. So then that nurse was able to work with her to get her on a low-cost, generic insulin, which cost around $12 a month. And so we were able to head off a potentially serious issue, because we were able to get the data coming from the medical plan for the A1C test, the data coming from the PBM, the pharmacy side, to see that she hasn't filled her drugs, and then we had people, nurses, that could actually reach out and talk and make that difference in that person's life. And the more you hear about this, more and more and more, it's not just about getting checkups, it's about looking at the person as a whole, and then figuring out what needs to happen. And the other side of this that you put together is the occupational health side. So there's an opportunity when you run clinics as well, to impact your worker's comp plan as well. Well, I think you'll have to look in the book, the formatting on this electronic version isn't working very well, but here's some examples of recent projects on the medical side that we have undertook with some of our clients that are about your size. One thing that's interesting, that's really been happening across the state, is a move away from just bidding the TPAs, or bidding the claims payers. Now, there's four legitimate claims payers left in the market, me, of Aetna, Blue Cross, United, and Cigna, and that's about it. So you can bounce around and try to get those four guys to play against each other, but at the end of the day, you're chasing pennies and leaving dollars on the table. And so what people have decided to do is, we have to approach this differently. The Accountable Care Organ, the Accountable Care Act created accountable care organizations, so ACOs, these are smaller, more patient-centered networks, working on a, on a risk basis to control cost. And so I would suggest pursuing one of these in El Paso. You guys have many hospital systems, you have several hospital systems that are worthwhile and can handle large volume, and are, I think, preferred, or people wouldn't mind using them. And so what people have done is, instead of bidding the carriers, they've simply found a carrier that they feel can administer the plan correctly, that everybody likes, they're responsive and answer the phone well, and then they bid the hospital systems against each other to get the absolute lowest rates. In some cases, you can get down near, near the Medicare rate, the federal government rate, which is about as good as you're going to get. And so by leveraging the hospitals against each other, you can find synergies and lower cost. And then the key about that is, providing a plan to the employees that is low deductibles, lower deductibles, and then lower family costs. volume and are, I, I think, preferred, or people wouldn't mind using them. And so what people have done is instead of bidding the carriers, they've simply found a carrier that they feel can administer the plan correctly, that everybody likes, they're responsive and answer the phone well, and then they bid the hospital systems against each other to get the absolute lowest rates. In some cases, you can get down near, near the Medicare rate, the federal government rate, which is about as good as you're going to get. And so by leveraging the hospitals against each other, you can find synergies and lower cost. And then the key about that is providing a plan to the employees that is low deductibles, lower deductibles, and then lower family costs. And a lot of these plans we've seen in school districts, it simply gets unaffordable to put a family on the health plan. But by offering a low-cost option, a buy-down option, that may be as narrow to only one hospital or one hospital system, that would allow people, young families, to join the plan. And that would be good for your younger employees, your younger families, the lower-paid employees. But then also, that's, that's good for the health plan by bringing those younger people into the fold, helping spread the risk across the plan. Next slide is talking about success with clinics. We've implemented clinics in a variety of, of different school districts across the state, and we've done them in a variety of different ways. So the first thing, when you start looking at clinics, is you have to figure out what would best fit your needs, what, what, what fits your resources, your space, the geography of your district, and everybody's different. You have to really do that study to figure out what makes the most sense. And so there's a variety of different options. There's onsite with a outsourced vendor, there's onsite with in-sourced, actually employed physicians, there's near-site, clinic-based, mobile, virtual, there's a bunch of different options, and they all vary in terms of engagement with the employees, return on investment, and they, they vary in just what's going to work at different districts. And so it really isn't a cookie cutter model that you can just say, hey, this is the one that always works. You have to spend time and figure out what will work at Socorro ISD, because it's going to be very different than what works in other places. Everybody's a little bit different in that regard. We also put on the table the Benefit Advocacy Center, and we proposed our proposal with and without it. And what the Benefit Advocacy Center is, it's a 1-800 number that is, that will act as a back office for your staff, answer any benefit questions, track, do customer surveys, a variety of different options that, and it sounds like you guys actually have something similar right now. Lastly, one of the other things that I think makes Gallagher a little bit different is that we have a total transparent model for our fees. It's a simple fee, it's upfront, the contract is completely one-sided, it binds us, not you, it can be terminated at any time, and we put 100% of our fee at risk. So that's saying, you can terminate us for any reason, we'll pay you the money back, and you can fire us for any reason, and we'll be out of your hair. We do that because we, this is nothing, this is the only thing I do. The only thing I do is Texas public entities. I have to live, because school districts talk to each other. If I burned Socorro, probably couldn't go down the street to, uh, El Paso or Yosleta, you know, it'd be tough there. So we live up to our, our word, and we just say, hey, we're going to put a transparent, easy fee on the table, and if for any reason you don't feel that we did the job that we said that we were going to do, we'll pay you back and we'll move on down the road.
Real quick, we're going to try to switch the presentation so that we can go out and make the presentation.
Yeah, it looks like we're over top of the hub presentation. No, it's okay. All right. That looks a little better. I'll go back to my, I'm pretty much done with the presentation, but there's the big numbers.
There it is.
So that's what we saved at these districts. And those were one-year projects that we did on a bunch of them. They're all about your size. Austin's a little bit bigger, Pasadena, Aleaf, about the same size as y'all. So I tried to keep it quick. I'd really like to hear what you guys have to say and see if I can answer any specific questions.
Mr. Ray.
First of all, I think what you would want to know is that, once we finished the other presentation, a number of board members, we still had more questions. So what we're hoping to do is, depending how much extra time that we need to, our board members should get their questions answered. And so we may ask the other presenter to come in and, and so they can answer their questions. So if you're okay with that, we just want to make sure you understand that.
I'm great. I got nothing to do.
If I may, real quick, he still has eight minutes and 30 seconds remaining from the presentation, plus the 10.
So we got a little bit of time. So I have a couple of questions. Are you familiar with our health, first of all, let's talk about health and not the clinic. Are you familiar with our current health plan that we use in the district?
Yes.
And so I think hopefully you're familiar with what, what we try to do as far as our health plan, as far as protecting our employees, make sure that they have affordable health plan, that if they need to go to a referral hospital, that we can be able to accommodate that, that we, we take care of the employees for their health and, and try to keep it at a low cost. Do you feel your firm would be able to mesh with that and be able to give us advice? Because what oftentimes happens is a firm will say, this is what I'm accustomed to, let me bring you into our plan, and this is what works, rather than work with us and to continue to ensure our employees as best we can. Do you think you would be able to do that?
I think, I think absolutely, and I'm sure everybody would say that, but we have 30 school districts, and all 30 of them have a different plan. And everybody's a little bit different. What you need in terms of competition is different. And generally, what we do is we come to, we try to learn the culture and learn the reasons why you've made those benefits decisions in the past, and then provide you with the information to make more educated decisions in, in the future. And a big part about that is benchmarking your board. So we benchmark every single school district in Texas every year, so not just the 58 that have their own plan, but we also benchmark the TRS plans. Because although the plan designs are all the same, everybody has a different contribution inside of that plan, and it changes how that looks to the employees. So we'll provide you with that information, and we'll, of course, be at your direction on how you want to act upon it.
One of the things in, talking now a little bit about the clinics, you mentioned that you help several districts with clinics. Have you helped any of those districts from inception to wherever they are now? They, they contact you and request your consulting services on, we'd like to open a clinic, give us some advice. Which districts have you done that with? All of them, or?
We have done it, well, not all of them. Some of them we've taken over midstream. We've taken over clinics and closed clinics. We've taken them over and fixed them. So we've done, taken them from the very start all the way through. On this sheet, we started the Pasadena Clinic and the Aleaf Clinic. Austin went with virtual clinics. They have 120-ish facilities, and they decided that it wasn't, because of the, the geography of the city, there was no one place they could put a clinic and be used by everybody. You know, the Austin traffic, it would take you forever to get to that clinic. So they decided to use little virtual clinics spread throughout their campuses. And so, yes, we have, in the last year, between virtual, onsite, near-site, and mobile, we've done about seven clinic projects from inception.
Are you familiar with the Mesquite ISD clinic?
I am familiar with the Mesquite ISD clinic, yes.
We, we just visited that model, not to go several of us, visited that model, and that seems to be potential, if we wanted to go this route, a viable model. And the advantage to that is that a couple of the other clinics and some of the other ISDs are really a doctor's office, where you go see either a nurse practitioner or PA, get a quick exam, get a prescription, and be on your way. And that one had more services provided to the employee, closer to what I envision, like a summit urgent care.
Yep.
Now, I'm not sure we want to open an urgent care, but we wanted a clinic, at least the thought was to have a clinic of greater substance. Have you opened any clinics similar to that, or assisted in with any of those clinics?
We, we have, and we're actually in the middle of one right now for the city of San Antonio. They're opening a quite extensive clinic system. They're opening three throughout the city right now, and theirs are actually, have full occupational health as well, so they're able to do things like stitches, set broken arms. I mean, they go kind of above and beyond. But then what I think's most important about those clinics, I think you're right, sometimes clinics become dock-in-a-box kind of model, like similar to what you'd have at like an HEB. Those, I don't think are worth the money, because there's not a need for those. There's not a shortage of low-cost doctor offices in, in, in the area. What the problem is, you need a health management system, and that's about intervening and trying to get people the correct care that they need and using the clinic as a health quarterback. And so I think those models, and that's similar to the Mesquite model, of a health quarterback works much better than just a doctor's office that is owned by the school.
Yeah, because the running nose clinic is not going to help us. We need something that would hopefully encourage employees to, to get to healthcare sooner and it be more affordable. So one of the things that's most important, from my perspective, is obviously the number one thing has to be the employee health. Are we going to be able to provide something that encourages them to come in earlier, that we're able to detect potential problems down the line earlier? So the health part of it has to be important. But very closely, they're behind that this isn't going to work if there's not a cost savings. So we've talked about here, the cost avoidance, the cost savings. This wouldn't be the first time somebody offers and says, hey, I've got a clinic contract with me, I'll see your employees, I'm a doctor contract with me, I'll see your employees. We're really just transferring the cost to them. We're not saving any money, I'm not sure we're helping our employees, and at the end of the day, that's not of any benefit. So as you look at that, are you able to assess that as far as, what I think would be also a cost savings involved?
You're, you're exactly right. And so when you talk about cost avoidance, that's probably the hardest part, right? Because how do you measure something that didn't happen? I can tell you it didn't happen, or, you know, people spin it different ways. And so the way that we measure all this is we get, and that goes back to the integration side of it. So all your data would be dumped into our data warehouse on a weekly basis, from the clinic, from the health plan, and from the pharmacy. And then from there, our actuaries build the models out against peer groups with similar demographics, age-sex ratios, zip codes, all those kind of things. Build the actuarial model to show this is what they should be spending if you were to take a similar-sized group in this area. Here's what they are spending. So you want that trend line to be set beneath the other line. That's the only way you can do true cost avoidance, is to have the analytical and the data warehousing behind it to then back out, figure out what's, what, what is the difference here between these two groups once we control for all variables? And if the answer is the clinic is making that difference, then we can say without a doubt, there is a return on investment.
So are you able to look at the actual marketplace and, and on a very simplistic way, somebody comes into our clinics with a sinus infection, seen by a doctor, prescribed medication, hopefully we have a pharmacy there, they get their medication and leave. But let's talk about the medical side. Seen by a doctor for a sinus infection, leave, you could compare that to the marketplace and say, if you had gone to a physician to be seen for a sinus infection, this is what it would have cost, so that we could track cost that way also?
Yes, and that is probably the easiest way of doing it. So it's very easy to say, it costs $80 at your clinic to treat a sinus infection, and then you got them a generic, and the generic costs $12, so you had a $92 incidence of care there, whereas the average incidence of care, if they went to an urgent care, was 180 plus a brand name. And so we could easily track that delta. The, the harder part, and really the, where the actuarial science comes into it, is on the, the cost avoidance side, and that's building those actuarial models to show that, okay, because your doctor, your nurses intervened on that person with diabetes, getting them treatment, that actually costs more in the short term, because you actually got them their insulin from not taking their insulin, so you actually incurred an expense that wasn't there before. However, two years down the road, you prevented an $800,000 kidney transplant, or death, or disability, or something like that. So that is where the, the actuarial science comes in on the cost avoidance side. The simple unit cost comparatives are extremely, are extremely easy, and we can actually provide those on a, on a monthly basis.
Yeah, one of the positive things that Dr. Mesquite said, they sat there one day and were discussing how many people's lives they saved or impacted their health by early diagnosis of something that otherwise wouldn't have been caught. One, I have one last question, I know other people have others, but if we were wanting to set up the, the clinic, one of the things that we would need a consultant potentially to help is with the actual search function of getting a doctor, getting pharmacist, getting a nurse, I'm sorry, a clinic manager, because that seems to be the, the core group that we need. And if you get the right people in those positions, if we have a, a, a good search, then this thing will prosper. If we don't, then we did spin our wheels and waste a lot of money. Do you assist with search firm function?
We absolutely do, and we were accustomed to doing that function. The first thing that I would propose is to sit down and figure out exactly what kind of model you want to pursue, and exactly what it's going to cost to pursue all those different kinds of models, from the outsourcing model to the insourcing model and the variety of other things that go with that. Because not only do you need, you have to have, like you said, you have to have great staff. It doesn't go anywhere without great staff. Then you also have to have the technology behind it, the electronic medical records and, and all the things that go with that in order to feed us the data, in order to make those comparatives. Because if we don't have the data, this is all for naught as well.
And you would help with the licensing also for the pharmacy, licensing for the clinic and so forth?
Licensing for the EMR, all the different parts that come with it, yes.
Thank you, sir. I'm there, Mr. Head of it for now.
Okay. Sure. Excellent. During, as you started off the presentation, you mentioned that you had, I think it was 30 different school districts, and that there was 58 that were self-insured and all the other ones are TRS. Why would the TRS ones not need your services?
We do have some TRS clients. It's just, they just don't buy, a lot of times they don't buy it because they're stuck in TRS, and they feel that there's nothing they can do about it. And so they take a much more hands-off approach in terms of managing their benefits. We do have a couple that pay us for different projects, one of those being Deer Park, where we actually run the clinic at Deer Park ISD for them, even though they're TRS. But most of the TRS districts generally just take a step back and say, it's TRS's problem, we're not spending any money to try to do anything about it.
Okay. Thank you. Where are you based out of?
I live in Houston.
You live in Houston. Everything's okay, hopefully, to get affected by the?
I live, I'm actually a city councilman in my hometown. I live just south of Houston, League City.
Oh, League.
We had 25% of the houses with over 18 inches of water.
You got water.
My house was okay, but it was a, it was, it was a not a fun weekend.
One of my coworkers lives in League City. So I'm going to tell him I met his, a city councilman.
Tell him to vote for me.
All right. If, you all are a large organization yourselves, if you were looking for a benefits consulting company, what would you be looking for?
So I think one thing that, that is important is that people have to have done it before. You have to, especially with school districts, it's not like a private entity. The way that, the way that you have to do the bidding process, the way that you have to communicate the benefits out, just the general, the public sector experience is invaluable. The other side of it is, what can you do to leverage your particular strengths? Because school districts, obviously, funding isn't one of your biggest strengths. I mean, you definitely have budget constraints. It's not like ExxonMobil, they can just throw money at things. But your, your real strengths come in that people actually want to help school districts, the community wants to help it, the providers, the hospitals want to still help you guys. And approaching them and working, creating those, the new ways of approaching it are still possible for you. Your other big strength is all your employees are right here. So you have a large employee base sitting right here, and so leverage those advantages. And I think you'd want to find somebody that has the experience kind of leveraging those advantages, both locally and then statewide as well.
Mr. Long, right?
Yes.
Austin, Pasadena, and Aleaf there, those are big numbers. Over what period of time and where exactly did those, I guess, that return come from?
Yeah, so those are one-year numbers. So Austin is a big health plan. They spend about $125 million a year on healthcare. And so the way we generated that 10.4 in one year was Austin's a two-hospital town, St. David's and Seton. And they had a big, broad PPO network, and they had $500 deductibles, Cadillac, of all Cadillac plans, great plan. But it had become increasingly unaffordable because they had a $500 deductible to put families on the plan. So the employee-only was covered, and that's great, and the district paid for the employee-only, but they virtually had no families on the plan. And if you were a paraprofessional, you'd almost be writing Austin ISD a check at the end of the month to pay for your family. So they came to me and they said, okay, we need to get $10 million out of the health plan. You can't change plan designs, you can't raise the employee premiums, and the district's not going to pay any more money. It's like, okay, that's a pretty good challenge. So what we did is we said, okay, let's go out into the community. We went to St. David's, we went to Seton, and we said, okay, you are going to get the base plan. You'll get 100% of the base plan for whoever wins. It just was going to be them and MD Anderson, because they needed MD Anderson. So whichever hospital wins, we said, in a sealed envelope, do the RFP process, give us back your rates as a percent of Medicare. So they came back, and Seton gave the rates at 110% of Medicare, 107, now it's at 107, which is basically what the federal government pays. And because of that, we were able to just have the same services we had before, but simply pay much, much less. And the other thing that we got out of this accountable care organization is they said, okay, we will guarantee that you won't spend over this dollar amount per employee per month. If you spend more than that per employee per month, we'll pay you back 75 cents on the dollar. And if you go, if we go under it, you guys will pay us 25 cents for each dollar you save. So we did it, and we were happy. Then the first year, we had to write them about a $2 million check. That's how much under the PPM target they had to pay, which, nobody likes writing checks, but that means that we saved $6 million on top of that. So that's where the big savings was generated in Austin ISD. And the other thing that we got out of this accountable care organization is they said, okay, we will guarantee that you won't spend over this dollar amount per employee per month. If you spend more than that per employee per month, we'll pay you back seventy-five cents on the dollar. And if you go, if we go under it, you guys will pay us twenty-five cents for each dollar you save. So we did it, and we were happy. Then the first year, we had to write them about a two million dollar check. That's how much under the PPM target they had to pay, which nobody likes writing checks, but that means that we saved six million dollars on top of that. So that's where the big savings was generated in Austin ISD. In Pasadena and Aleaf, we also put in accountable care organizations with Memorial. And in Pasadena, they actually do something pretty unique, just the way the city is laid out, there's three hospitals in the city, city's kind of spread out. They offer three plan designs that are exactly the same. There's no difference in the plan design, same deductibles, same copays, everything. Three plans. One plan only has Memorial Hermann in the network, one plan has only Bay Shore Hospital, which is a local hospital, and one plan has the big broad network. And then the actuaries price out what they're, what they should be based on that. So everybody gets the same plan design. The Memorial Hermann, because of the discounts they're giving in the accountable care organization, is, the employee only rate comes out to be about three hundred dollars for a pretty good two thousand dollar deductible plan. So it's three hundred, the other one's five hundred, and the other one, big broad network, is six hundred. So they're generating savings by controlling where people are going and then putting those accountable care principles around it.
Yeah, and I'm not a economics or anything like that, so excuse my ignorance. I assume that you're going to use some sort of a static model to begin with, and you probably have some sort of a running dynamic model that you're going to be making comparisons and adjustments to it, right?
Yes.
Am I correct?
That's exactly what we...
Now, in, in order to, to get any savings into the system, what timeframes do you allow?
So you generally want to allow fourteen months, because it takes twelve to fourteen months, depending on how you're going to ramp these up, and depending if you're looking at an incurred or a paid basis. But just say we're looking at an incurred basis, which means when the claim is actually filed, it's an incurred basis, so when, when it's actually done. So on an incurred basis, we'd look at the, the savings to be done over a twelve-month period. Thank you.
Well then, no, then I do have one. When you did this on these plans, what did you cut out on patient care and healthcare? Because what, what happens here is if, right now, we, we've got some employees on medication for hepatitis C. If you take that out of the plan, then that becomes a problem. If you take high-risk pregnancies out of the plan, you know, what did you take out?
So we did not take out anything. So simply what we did is pay the doctors less money. And so when you set these up, there's multiple different ways to set them up. The San Antonio model is instead of a two-tiered BPO, in and out of network, they went to a three-tiered model. So there's, there, that's a three-hospital city, Baptist, Methodist and Christus. They bid, we bid the three hospitals against each other. Baptist came back as the best. So we made Baptist the preferred, super preferred, right? So we took that from an eighty percent co-insurance to a ninety percent co-insurance, because they gave the district a twenty percent discount on the, on the cost. So then we said, we'll split that with the employee. The employee gets ten percent, because it went from eighty percent coverage to ninety percent coverage, district's going to keep the other ten percent of that. But if they say, hey, no, I, I don't like Baptist, I still, I want to go to Methodist, okay, you can still go to Methodist, and it's the old eighty percent reimbursement that you had before. So instead of a takeaway, it was a, it was a benefit, because you had about fifty percent of the claims going to Baptist anyway. And then over this last year, we've just, just doing the renewal right now, we just finished it, we saw that there was a lot of people that said, I don't really care between the two, if I can pay ten percent less, I'm going to go to the place I can pay ten percent less. And so we saw the Baptist percentage go from fifty percent to almost eighty percent. And so we would expect over time, as people make those choices and understand the plan a little better, we'll expect more and more people to continue to make that shift. So instead of taking things away, it was about creating a plan design that set up in a way that everybody could win, the district and the employee.
Of the school districts that you currently work with, which would you say have similar demographics to us?
San Antonio, Brownsville, they're both, Pasadena, you guys are all about the same size. I looked on the charts, about the same, you know, socio-demographic and, and age, sex ratios. Those are real, pretty similar.
Great, great, thank you, thank you. No more.
Mr. Long, thank you so much.
I do, I'm sorry.
One more.
One more.
Yeah, Mr. Long, so how long does it take to, to do something like this? I mean, let's say that, when's our next board meeting?
Next Tuesday?
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, let's say next Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Yeah.
We awarded you the contract, right? How long does it take to, you know, for you to do, because, I mean, the presentation starts with an assessment, you know, you of course would have to come to understand our current plan, what our current financial situation is, et cetera, what our objectives are for your assessment. How long does all of that take? I mean, are we looking at next June, or are we looking at, we have results in, you know, before the end of the year?
It would definitely be before the end of the year, because the nice part is, it's not me. So when you, you know, I may be the only one up here, but you're not buying me, you're buying the whole team. And so everybody takes their piece. Ruben would start with the compliance audit immediately. So the first thing you do when you take over a new plan, it's not even worth checking until we make sure that everything's buttoned up from a legal point of view. You know, make sure everybody passes the compliance audit first. So he starts on that immediately, whereas Mariella would start on the, the clinic assessment. She's a nurse and wellness person. She starts digging into that side of it. Yeah, I would do the, the medical side, and then the pharmacists start breaking down the PBM side. So even though there's a lot of things going on, it's divided up amongst the team, and then it's my responsibility to bring it back into one, you know, package that it all makes sense. But before the end of the year is, is, is not hard at all in, in this timeframe. I mean, to get it completely implemented, maybe we can't build a clinic probably by then, but we could definitely lay the plan and have the plan start to be executed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Long, we appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Great info. How much longer did he...
How much extra time did he get?
No, he went under his time.
How much extra time did he get?
Maybe just maybe two...
Well, but we gave him...
No, he went over the twenty minutes.
Question and answer.
He's not over, he's ten minutes.
He only went over eight minutes.
He's still had eight minutes on his presentation.
But he did, he went over by three minutes, but his presentation was only eight minutes. So it was fifteen of question and answer.
His presentation was twelve minutes, because he had eight minutes left.
Oh, he had eight?
Yeah.
I think that's it, we're already having...
Well, my issue is, did we have any questions?
Pardon me?
Did we have any questions?
No, I mean, I was going to ask him, but you know, Michael always takes them from me, so...
If there are no questions, I mean...
I'll ask him back.
Yeah, I kind of have the same question. The timeframe...
For the other gentleman?
And that, that should lead up three minutes and we're there.
But that's three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes. I won't ask anything. The first gentleman. I was, I was embarrassed to tell him. You work for Health too? We apologize, we had like a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Did you want to continue?
I appreciate you waiting.
Mr. McGraw, thank you so much for sticking around, sir. We, we're trying to stick to our time constraints there that we had established and, you know, to make sure there's fairness involved in it all, but we still had some, some questions that remained. So, Mr. McGraw, in, in, in your handouts, you mentioned that you all have five school districts, I'm sorry, seven school districts, but only five are listed. What happened with the other two?
Well, they, they'd asked us for three and I put down five.
Oh, okay.
The other two, happy to name them, are the South San Antonio Independent School District and Edgewood Independent School District. And so like I've mentioned, those two districts currently are fully insured. The Edgewood Independent School District is, was previously self-insured, but they had kind of gotten themselves into a bad arrangement, and that's why they had approached us and solicited us to help them get out of that. So this year, January the first, we switched them to a fully insured arrangement. And primarily, like I told the folks in the committee on Friday as well, I'm a big believer in cutting out the excess profit and anything I can, and I know that being self-insured eliminates taxes, you know, so that the same claim paid under Cigna, for example, fully insured and self-insured is going to get paid at the same limit. The difference in the financing is there's more taxes in fully insured. But in this case, after a very rigorous RFP that we conducted, we had three, three major bidders that were indicating through our claims analysis test that the program would cost about ten million dollars per year, which is what it was costing at that time too. But then for the same benefits in the solicitation, one of the vendors offered us a fully insured rate of seven point five million. So it was a two point five million dollar windfall gain for the district to revert to a fully insured contract. Now, that insurance carrier is going to lose two and a half million dollars per year for the next two years, in my estimate. And we did negotiate multi-year rates for them, but we know too that at the end of 2018, we'll have to go back and reassess the situation for them. The other district is just going through a period of some, let's just, let's, I'm not sure of the way, they have a monitor established by the state. They haven't been very fiscally prudent in their actions, and they should not be taking on risk being self-insured at this time, so that's why they're fully insured at this time.
Mr. McGraw, you, I, I've, I know through personal contact that some of the school districts listed use TRS.
Oh, Pasco Independent School District.
Correct. And so what, what services do you provide for them? They don't have many options.
Well, it's a, it's a very valid question. So we have worked with them since 2001, and we've navigated them through a lot of times being self-insured. In 2010, unfortunately, their committee made some bad recommendations, not our recommendation, to join TRS. And of course, you're probably aware that once you're in TRS, you cannot, you cannot get out of TRS unless it, there's an active, literally not Congress, but the state legislature. So for the last four to five years, we've been working with the district to try to help petition the state to allow them to leave. It came close this year, there were some bills introduced, but they died in the calendar committee that didn't make it. So for them, we still provide them with consultation advice on all their voluntary employee benefits, et cetera. Of course, we lowered our fee to be commensurate with the amount of activity that we have. We were poised this year too, we had several different exit strategies for them, had the legislature gone ahead and passed legislation to depart, we had three exit strategies, strategies already mapped out, but they didn't come to pass. So quite frankly, and they still, so we, we've done solicitations for them on their clinic and their overview of the clinic operations, as well as their voluntary benefits. Quite frankly, I'm excited that they chose to keep us retained, because there's really not a whole lot to do. But for the services that we've delivered, I think we've delivered excellent bang for the buck, even without the health plan being self-insured.
Mr. McGraw, I'm not a, a benefits consultant, so, you know, I, I, other than, well, okay, I guess once a year I am a benefits consultant, my own benefits consultant, because I, you know, use my employer, right? But what am I looking for? What would you look for if you were trying to hire a benefits consultant for your company?
Well, that's a great question. I would say that it, there's, from a perspective of what do benefit consultants do, we, we all do a lot of the same things in terms of being aware of the requirements that you have to meet, whether you're fully insured or self-insured, benefit plan designs. But I think too, especially in the environment of the self-insured environment, knowing how all of the component parts work. So there, and there's the ability to, I mean, anybody can, well, I know Mr. Long, I've passed him in the hall, we see each other all around the state, and I'm familiar with his background, I've seen his work, he's seen mine. He sat in on a presentation I gave a month or so ago to risk managers for cities in Austin. So there's, I call there's the science part, which is the analytical part. We can take the data, we can look at it, we can create a database, we can mine it. But I think the other thing too is the common sense, or what I would call the art part of the business too. And that just takes a good familiarity with human behavior and how people make decisions, because like I said earlier, if we can change the way that people consume healthcare, that would have the biggest impact, more than changing a deductible or changing the insurance carrier or changing the provider network, et cetera. If we can change the delivery system too, and cut out some of the egregious markup, so you mentioned the egregious markup on pharmaceuticals, I think on a percentage basis, it's even, it's even worse in vision wear. So I think then, to get back to answer your question, you need to have somebody that's knowledgeable on all of the analytical and the science part of it. You need to have somebody that has the experience and the common sense. You need to have somebody that can communicate clearly with all different levels of employees, because it's sometimes we're talking to the end user, sometimes we're at the board. So I think all of those things together go, and then of course, ethics, integrity, honesty, all those things to make sure you're getting good advice.
Okay. Mr. McGraw, if we were, our, our, our next board meeting as an example is next Tuesday, the nineteenth, but if, you know, between now and then, we miraculously made a decision and awarded, you know, this particular contract to you, how long does all of this take? I mean, you start with an assessment, you, I'm sure have to evaluate our plan, our claims, understand exactly what our objectives are, what our financial resources, so there's a lot of discovery that needs to occur. What's the timeline for that? Are we looking at a month from Tuesday, six months from Tuesday?
Actually, things can go rather, well, there's, I guess, I see two different phases of what you have in store. You've got the, the objective and the goal of opening the clinic, and I think that one has the longer timeline. And so there needs to be some plans laid out and actions taken and key points set, you know, and then get the plan in motion for fulfillment. On the other side of things, in terms of the benefit consulting part, that actually can move pretty quickly. We already have established relationships with all the key providers. It's basically a matter of you contracting with us. We sign off on all the appropriate disclosures and agreements, you know, acknowledging that we're going to protect all of your information, just like we protect, we, we have like incredible amount of information tucked away in our computer system that's secure, unlike Equifax. And so that part's relatively easy. As quickly as we can get contracted, paperwork signed and transmitted to the various carriers, then the information starts to flow to us. We've already got templates set up. Once we have the information, we can merge it into our system, and we can be up and running within two weeks of when we have your, our raw data, to be able to start to build a, a picture. In order to do that, we need about three to four years worth of data, which I'm sure we have. You haven't really changed your carriers, although again, I've lost track of whether you still kept your pharmacy benefit managers with express scripts. But that data can move pretty quickly and be assessed pretty quickly, from a, start from a say-go to a point in time where we could come in and say, here's what our findings are in terms of what we think you're doing. In terms of plan design, I already know what your plan designs are, because everybody likes to compare benefit plans and payroll deductions, et cetera. What I can't see behind the scenes, and that's what I caution everybody to when they're looking at these different benchmark studies. You know, that study just tells you at any point in time what the benefits are offered and what people are contributing. I don't know if that's enough money, or too much money, or just right money, there's other things behind there that need to know about the finances of your plan, the resources that you have, constraints and plans that you have in the future. But once we have that information in-house, and we've gathered all the data, then we're probably forty-five days from start to say, okay, now we have a really good, fair picture of where, of where we think you should go in terms of that portion. But the other part is more time sensitive. There's some key steps that we need to get in place to have that. I know your goal was to have it ready to go by January the first, and that's getting pretty tight for that deadline.
Yeah. Mr. McGraw, the database that you referred to in your presentation, so when you take our data and you analyze that data, what are you looking at? Are you looking for compliance and processing our claims to what our contracted rates are for proper payment? Are you looking, our rates compared to Medicare rates? Are you looking across, you know, just the city itself and, you know, our, our rates and what we're reimbursing for services or what we're paying for services in line with what the other school districts and governmental entities are paying? What is that comparison that you're doing?
What we're really looking for there, because, for example, you have Cigna right now, that's their big ticket item, and you're using their preferred provider network they refer to as their OAP network. That's their best network with the highest level of negotiated discounts, et cetera. Anybody who does business with Cigna has access to those numbers. So if I were to take your Cigna data and compare it to another client's Cigna data here, and compare one office visit to the other, it should be an exact match for the same service. So we're not so much comparing that one unit of service, we're really more looking at the mix of your utilization behind the scenes, and seeing how that compares to other norms and peer groups that are out there. And the, the statistics can be thrown off by a lot of different variables. So there's, like they say, there's lies, damn lies in statistics. But there are a lot of things that can drive the outcome of that number. And, you know, sometime, and so one of the things that I do too, that I haven't expounded on here, but it, I find some pleasure in it, well, actually I find a lot of pleasure in it, but I help unions negotiate their benefits with their employers. So for example, here in El Paso, I sit on the city of El Paso's side of the bargaining table when they're negotiating with their police and firemen. In San Antonio, I sit on the side of the Police Officers Association when we're negotiating with the city of San Antonio.[1773.31] And so in, in doing that, uh, it gives me the opportunity to have, I, I say I get to be, you know, your worst nightmare as a benefit consultant. So the last two years, it was me versus Gallagher, Arthur J. Gallagher, Randy from El Paso versus the Gallagher entity organization. The city didn't want to provide free insurance to the policemen anymore. Free meaning, cost you nothing for employees, cost you nothing for their dependents. The outcome of two years of negotiating, even though the city manager, et cetera, said, we are not, you are not gonna walk out of here with free insurance. After a year and a half, almost two years, we walked out free health insurance, a consumer-driven health plan with a fifteen hundred dollar annual contribution to the police officers guaranteed for a five-year period of time. In order to do that, we were in this battle of statistics too, where the city would say, well, your metric, you know, your unit of measurement is this and our unit of measurement is that, ours is lower, yours is higher, we're better than you. No, you're not. We've got three times the number of dependents. Our health insurance plan for the police officers means everybody joins, all of their children, all of their spouses. On the city's side of the equation, there's only one point seven, uh, dependents for every employee that's out there compared to nearly three on the other one. So when they would take a unit of measurement and say, over here it costs us six thousand dollars or eight thousand, was their number for an average employee per year? And over here in the police officers, you're twelve thousand. Oh yeah, we have fifty percent more people than you do, it should be. So just taking that raw data and being able to look at it is not, doesn't tell the whole story. You need to look at all of the other variables that drive that and then take a look and see, are there things that are happening inside of your group? Because we can go out and access that same unit of measurement of anywhere with, uh, Cigna. And we could say that on that one particular service, it might be cheaper than Aetna, but a different service, it might be better. So you need to look at the big picture, you need to look at the patterns that are out there, you need to see the prevalence of risk. You need to see what programs or concepts that you can implement to try to change behavior or steer people to a better setting. And those are all the things together that come together to, uh, provide the good consultative practice. So it's not just looking at the per-unit part, but that's the beginning of the process to see where it leads.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah. I just have one question. You referred to this, uh, table of provider network analysis as your static model. You referred to this table as, as your static model when you?
Correct.
And I assume that you have some sort of, uh, dynamic model that you run at the same time, uh, to see, you know, if you were going to spend more or less than what you were supposed to with this model. Now, in, in a, a timeframe to make the adjustments, how, how long of that time would be good for you to make that adjustment?
So in other words, if we were looking at this data set and you said, if I were to throw out, if I were to say, you can't go to all hospitals anymore, you just go to tenant facilities and no Las Palmas still, so how long would it take us to?
No, no, I, I'm more concerned with the fact that you, you need to make a profit like everybody else. So if, if your model, the static model and your dynamic model are too far off?
Oh, no, the static one I have on my computer there, I could pull it up and.
Right, well, I know that, but that, that doesn't allow any change. The dynamic model is the one that's gotta control this.
Yeah, this is just a snapshot of that.
Right. So how long of a time would you be able to use to make any adjustments so that we could be, uh, having a good insurance and you could also have a problem?
Well, so we're in the middle of a, an assessment for the city of El Paso right now. Uh, they've just opened their, uh, proposals, their committee's starting to meet. Of course, we're taking a similar data set, even larger than this one. From the day that we received the information to the point in time where we have the model ready for interactive display, et cetera. It took us four working days to get that done.
Well, but, uh, to, to have it running, I mean, if you?
Yeah, so what we have to do is we have to take the data from each one of the different alternatives. And then we have to clean it up too, because despite any instructions that you put in a bid, not everybody follows them. So what we had, what's also important to do there is just make sure that the integrity of the data is good. So for example, you know, line number twenty-four thousand, somebody might have skipped it. So we have to go through, we wanna make sure that everything compares apples to apples. Any discrepancy in the data set gets removed so that it's all there. And that's really what takes the longest amount of time. The rest of it is just numbers and databases. And so that's again where our data analytics person and her expertise really greatly simplifies the process in terms of taking all those different sources of data, bringing them all together, building the interactive model and then having it set to where we can start to search it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. McGraw, thank you so much for staying and answering our additional questions, we truly appreciate it.
Absolutely, you're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Campoya?
Yeah. I was wondering if, uh, either purchasing or any of our staff had any comments? Mr. Campoya or Mr. Ressa or Mr. Garcia, do we have any comments on these two vendors?
Already members from the committee.
Or members of the committee, do you have comments? The workshop. Anything you'd like to add?
Oh, I have some.
Do you have anything you'd like to add that'll help us, that we can talk to you? Something we should be aware of?
Which part of the meeting from Gallagher was, um?
Can't hear you.
Yeah.
I should say, we can hear you, but.
Well, I recorded.
Correct.
In looking at both, um, companies, consulting firms, um, the guaranteed price by Gallagher, um, where they're putting their money, where their mouth is, um, was enticing as far as giving us the option to see if we liked their services that they were providing, especially from both. Rather than getting into a three-year contract with someone that, you know, we might not like their services. So that was also something that the committee, um, we felt was a little bit more enticing in going with Gallagher.
So, uh, we did have discussion in our church, uh, we go ahead and rank the two or wait until after, uh, this presentation. Uh, our attorney said, you need to really rank them and make a decision or a recommendation. And let the board hear the two presentations and then based on our recommendation, the board's decision to see whether they concur or if they wanna recommend the other vendor. Uh, from my perspective, I've worked with, uh, Randy McGrath since when I was in Gump, he was our healthcare consultant there. Uh, so, uh, bottom line, he, he did provide good services, just from a personal perspective. But we did make a decision, I think the committee reckoned we were gonna recommend, uh, Gallagher.
I.
When you see that. But, but again, that's, that's, we ranked it because it was based on, on the recommendation from former attorney, go ahead and make a recommendation.
Mr. Gonzalez, who or Mr. Campoya, I'm not sure, but, um, who did this service before? Is, is this Wells Fargo, is this Cigna, is it, or none of them?
The, the service before was actually Wells Fargo. And then they, the, the company left, the portion of Wells Fargo that did this service left for Houston, so it was taken up by USI. And they're the ones that provided that service for the last three years, if I'm not mistaken, maybe a little bit longer. And so they did submit a bid originally and then they withdrew it because of the, uh, combination of adding the, uh, consulting for the clinic.
Right. Okay, so, so if I was trying to recall, um, who had provided this service and what the outcomes of it were, et cetera, it was, uh, Wells Fargo and we had, um, the representative was?
Her name was Debbie Faulkner.
Right, okay. Okay. Okay.
Well, I need to find out first, um, I know that this has a two-part consideration. One is the insurance and, uh, part of it, which I have no problem with. I do have a problem with the clinic portion of it. Because we are utilizing money for education into a business we have no reason being in. We provide a healthy packet of insurance for the employees, the best in the city. Well, not the city, but the, uh, school districts. And, and, uh, and this time, especially when we just got out with four hundred and forty-eight million, asking the taxpayer because we need more taxes to do this and this and that. Any money that we should have in savings should be used in, in, uh, in the, uh, education part of the, the equation. Uh, and to be specific, you know, I, uh, I don't think that we're going to change behaviors. We are all grown up here and we, every single one of us, you know, gonna decide to get up this morning and go to doctor or not, if need be, or follow the recommendations of a doctor or this or that, whatever. But we provide a very good package of insurance that we could, under that package, get the services that we need. And, uh, when we go out and, and, and start getting these schools built and remodeling stuff like that, there's scientific equipment or any other kind of, uh, equipment that those schools may need because it changes so fast. And we are not using that money for their education.
So if, if I may, uh, Mrs. Not, yeah. The purpose of this meeting, this is a discussion that'll happen in the future with respect to the clinic. The purpose of this meeting was, we need to hire a healthcare consultant.
Right.
We know that there'll be a discussion with respect to the clinic in the future, but it was important for us to make sure that, as a committee, we had these presentations, make a recommendation. We felt it was very important for the board to hear these two firms and, and make sure that it answered, that they answered there's some of your questions that you might have with respect to not only the healthcare services they provide, but possibly the clinic, should the board in the future decide we go in that direction. And so that is the purpose, simply so that when we bring this up on the agenda on Tuesday, the nineteenth, I believe it's a separate item, it's not under consent. The board member can ask specific questions and the board members can certainly occur with the recommendation or decide to go with the other firm.
This is just consulting?
Exactly.
Right. So we're not buying anything?
Test.
Yes, sir. So.
Just wanna, just clarify what Mr. Gonzalez just said. So the clinic is not on the table right now?
No, sir.
Okay, not next month, it'll be in the future.
That's correct, sir. And, and so again.
This company can provide us consulting to that end if we want it.
Exactly.
Right.
At least you'll have their input and you'll have a, an informed decision.
If and when we.
Mr. Gonzalez, if I may, uh, the purpose is that we can then request that twice a week provided. So, uh, members of the board, um, the purpose is so that we then, we can then ask the vendors to break out the services. So if we need to engage in a clinic, we already have the, the consultant in order to, to do that. So we would bring to the table a total package to say, this is the total cost for the actual, uh, benefit services and this is the additional cost if we decide to move forward with the clinic.
Mr. Ressa, right now, um, who did you say was providing this service for us?
It was USI and their contract, I think, ends this month.
Okay, so, bottom line, we need to make a decision at our board meeting.
Tuesday.
Based on, on the two proposals that were made.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And, and again, the only thing we're looking at is the consulting services for?
The plan.
Our insurance. Okay.
Well, hold on. Let's be clear, we're looking at the consulting services for our plan, but in part of our plan is if we want consulting services for a clinic, they're in there.
Right.
So I mean, it, I don't wanna.
But that's gonna be discussed at a future, at a future time.
And the consulting can be done anytime, if, are we gonna open a clinic or not open a clinic, that can be discussed down the line. But, but that's already here, I mean, I certainly wouldn't wanna, the reason we wanted to have the workshop is for this reason. Make sure there's no misunderstanding, this consulting covers everything.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Richter.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we're good, thank you, you did a good job.
Hector, what are you talking about?
About what?
This, you're, you're not coming, what are you talking about?
Exactly what I said, I said it in English.
No, 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 you said it in English, but you made no sense, my friend, what the?